Boy, the fourteenth at six thirty, I called the order, the planning commission for tonight. Tonight's planning commission meeting is being held in person and virtually by using Zoom. As chair, I'll be leading the planning commission meeting and the public is welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person or join via the Zoom. If attendees experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the meeting and then rejoin. This has usually fixed the issue. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at www.burnsvillemn.gov in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available for viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you are unable to participate this evening, would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. All that information can be found on the website, burnsvillemn.gov. You may also participate in the meeting tonight online by going to zoom.us/join and type in a meeting ID nine four nine seven one zero seven one one six four. Once you are logged in to the meeting, you can use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. You may also call into the meeting at six five one three seven two eight two nine nine. Again, you're going to use the same meeting ID nine four nine seven one zero seven one one six four. And for each public hearing, I will open up a time when the callers can speak to that item and give you more instructions at that time. Your call will be muted until then, and so note there, also note there might be a slight delay between the technology, so we ask that you please mute your computer if you're speaking on the phone. With that, I'm going to turn to our agenda for tonight's. Any changes to the agenda commissioners? None? Any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Staff? Okay, seeing none, I would look for a motion for tonight's agenda as you received in the emails. Commissioner Wallace?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Good deal. Commissioner Wallace makes a motion. Commissioner Braddock?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Braddock. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No one opposes? And that carries. On to the next item. You will have found the meeting notes from our previous meeting in our packets. Any changes to those notes commissioners that you saw? Commissioner Timmerman?
I just noticed one item on item number three at the bottom. We indicated that it carried by voice vote with no dissenting votes, and then it was three to one. So there was a dissenting vote. We just need to update the, that last sentence.
That's a very good note.
I read them.
Yeah. We were testing to see if you did read them, and we're glad to see that you did.
Occasionally.
You pay attention, that's good. Somebody's paying attention. Any other changes commissioners? Any change of staff?
No.
Seeing none. With our change, would you be willing to make a motion?
I make that motion.
Commissioner Timmerman makes that motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Awad?
I'll second the motion.
All right, a motion made by Commissioner Timmerman, seconded by Commissioner Awad. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Hearing none, that goes. All right, we only have one item on the agenda tonight. Well, I think we have two actually. But this is the public hearing for an application of Centerpoint Energy for a conditional use permit amendment to allow grading, filling, and utility work within the shoreline, wetland, soil erosion, and floodplain districts of the Minnesota River and Black Dog Lake to replace the existing natural gas pipelines at eleven five hundred, Twelfth Avenue South, and on property owned by Excel Energy at fourteen hundred Black Dog Road East. Here to present is one of our city planners, Deb Gueros. Ms. Gueros, the floor is yours.
Thank you commissioners. The application before you is a conditional use permit amendment. The corridors that we're talking about this evening are pipeline and overhead power line corridors have been in place since the fifties. So what the applicant is doing is really doing maintenance work on their system, and they're looking to replace parts of two existing natural gas pipelines. The CUP is required to allow grading, filling, and utility work within the floodplain, and also whenever there is movement of ninety cubic yards or more material in a shoreline district, that follows a conditional use permit. And then also, they are proposing some work in steep slopes or our soils district, and that also would require a conditional use permit. So for Centerpoint, there are really two lines that are involved in this project and two properties that are affected. The property that is southeast of the railroad, which the railroad is approximately in this location here. Property to the south is the Centerpoint Energy property. It's their Dakota Station where their main pipelines come in and then also extend further to the north for the Twin Cities metropolitan area. The Lindale Line is the shortest line, and all of that work is proposed to take place on the Centerpoint Project. Once you get north of the railroad tracks and all the way up to the Minnesota River, that property is owned by Excel Energy. A lot of it is leased to the natural wildlife area, so both of those entities are involved, but the application is from Centerpoint for their natural gas pipeline. All of the work that's proposed will be within their easements, and what they're looking to do totally is the Nicolet Line, which is the longest line, they're looking to replace roughly about seven thousand four hundred feet of pipeline. The Lindale Line, which is this shorter yellow line, is about three thousand two hundred feet of pipeline that's being replaced. The Centerpoint property is owned I one Industrial Park, and the Excel property is owned Conservancy because most of the area is wetland, a series of open space areas, and that is again covered by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. They have, they lease that property to the service. There are a number of overlay districts that are involved here, just because we're in this natural corridor, if you will. The soil erosion district is these deep slopes. Those are on the Centerpoint property, and I'll identify those in a minute. There are wetlands on both properties, so there are some impacts, temporary impacts to the wetlands. Shoreland is primarily on the Excel site, and it, the Centerpoint site is in the drinking water protection overlay, but there should not be any impacts to that associated with the project. And then the floodplain is on the Excel property. So just in summary, they're looking to replace the existing natural gas pipeline with a new twenty-four inch diameter steel natural gas pipeline. They're going to do this in a combination, depending on where you are at in the project, of either open trench and then also a direct drilling method. So there's two different methods that are proposed. As I had indicated, there really are no permanent wetland impacts. There will be some temporary impacts. The project will involve installing new pipeline under the Minnesota River, Black Dog Lake, and the adjacent wetlands. That'll all be the directional drilling method. There will be about four thousand four hundred or so feet of pipeline to be installed south of Black Dog Lake, and that's open trench area. There's nine hundred and twenty new feet of pipeline that will be installed under the railroad right of way, and then additional three thousand, almost four thousand feet of pipeline under the bridge in the Minnesota River will be abandoned in place. Sections of that pipeline under the Minnesota River will be filled so that they do not become buoyant. That's a standard practice. And then areas where new pipeline will be located in a different corridor, the pipeline will be abandoned in place, and that all of the abandoned segments are capped, and they do follow the multiple standards of multiple federal and state agencies and jurisdictions that have review authority over this. And then where they have new and existing pipelines that overlap, the existing pipeline will be removed. As I said, all the work will take place within the easements. They do have limited tree removal, and the majority of the trees that are being removed are ash and cottonwoods. I believe there's one, one or two other trees in the entire site that are not those varieties. The sixty-eight trees in total that'll be removed, the tree value is about forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. We do keep a running track, and most of this tree removal is going to be occurring on the Excel property. So we do keep a running track of all the removals for both of those properties, so that if they get to a point where they're close to the removal threshold, then they would need to do replacement. In this case, there is no replacement for trees that's required. They do have a number of erosion control best management practices that are in place, and we included that information in the packet. They have submitted a no rise certificate. That's required for the floodplain and Federal Emergency Management Agency, and what that indicates is that their project will not result in any increase in the floodplain or flood stage. So we do have that already. They have made application for their tree removal permits and have issued those. In terms of the shoreline district, very little impact. The entire site is over eighty-six acres when you include both Excel and Centerpoint properties. The impervious surface is a little over fourteen and a half percent. The ordinance allows up to thirty percent, so they're still well below that. And then as far as wetlands, they are going to have some temporary impacts. In terms of the overall alignment, what I'm showing here is the general location of the pipeline, which goes from the south part of the Centerpoint property all the way over to the city of Bloomington and up the bluffs on the Bloomington side. In terms of the city's project, it's everything from the south side of the Minnesota River and south. The areas that are indicated here in kind of this magenta or dark pink are the areas where there are steep slopes, and these are areas also identified by the lower Minnesota River watershed district, and the application will need to be reviewed by them as well. Terms of the other districts, the, maybe a little bit hard to distinguish, but kind of these areas in green are wetland districts, and then you have the shoreland district is within three hundred feet of the river and a thousand feet of the lake, Black Dog Lake, which is here. And the subject site for Centerpoint is approximately in this location. And this just shows the floodplain map, basically all of the areas floodway, and this includes pretty much everything north of the railroad tracks and beyond the Minnesota River. And as I indicated, there are, they did do a wetland delineation, there are a number of wetlands, a little over twelve acres total for the entire project, about ten acres is in Burnsville. There will be a couple of acres, almost three acres, that are impacted in Bloomington. The rest, about nine point four five acres, will have temporary impacts in Burnsville. They are, they will be associated with part of the trenching and also the laying of mats to help them basically keep equipment so you don't get big dugouts in the wetland areas. They do propose on reusing the soils, so, and then also they will be cutting off things within about three or four inches so that the, what's there naturally will reestablish. And then these are just the various areas where there are wetlands, and I can talk about any of these further if you have questions. And then the route itself, as I indicated, the majority of the route is with the Nicolet River Crossing, and you have those in your packets, but this area on the top is showing the bluff in Bloomington and then moving south toward the Minnesota River. And then we have the crossing across the Minnesota River and then over part of Black Dog Lake, and this is all the Nicolet Line. This is over Black Dog Lake, and then beyond that, a continuation on the Excel property towards the railroad tracks. Railroad tracks are shown here on the very southern, kind of southeast, lower right-hand side of the track. And then at that point, when you cross over to the Centerpoint property, that's where you see the other Lindale Line that's involved with this project, and this is where the steep slope areas are. And they do propose, there are a number of best management practices and erosion control that they will be installing and continuing throughout the project. We did include with a packet this graphic, which shows generally where the pipeline sections will be removed from the project, where they'll be abandoned in place, and then the ones that'll be abandoned in place and then filled. And I do have additional, I did not include all of the maps, but I do have them here if you want to get into those in detail, but this is basically the plan and profile for the project that will be going underneath the Minnesota River. So below the riverbed, there is a minimum of thirty feet of separation between the riverbed and where the, the pipeline will be drilled underneath and brought through. And then this is Black Dog Lake, and here, interestingly enough, you have basically the pipeline that is located, will be situated kind of on the bottom part of the lake, laid down there, and that also is about a thirty-one foot depth in that location. Excel Energy does periodically draw down Black Dog Lake. They have a couple of, a couple of gates that they can open and close when they need to do particular work on the site. So there are times in which there is not water, not very often, but occasionally, and just so you know, it's not just a, you know, a lake, a typical lake, but it is actually used for utility purpose. And if, again, there are any questions, this is related to the crossing through the railroad, and they have been working with, with the United Pacific Railroad in order to get approvals to cross. With that, staff is recommending approval of the CUP amendment, subject to primarily conditions related to FEMA requirements that we have to have for the city to administer the floodplain program, and then a couple of items related to engineering. Basically, all the conditions of the previously approved CUPs remain of full force and effect, except as amended here. And then we're asking that they provide us with written documentation of floodproofing measures once the project is complete. As constructed plans will need to be provided, again, once the project is complete, all construction materials will need to be removed from the disturbed areas, and they are proposing to do that anyway. Number five, all disturbed areas will be restored and construction materials removed after completion. And number six, this project will require a national pollution discharge elimination system, construction stormwater permit. There we go. That's a big one. That's an engineering one. Those are the, the recommendations from staff, and this is a public hearing, and I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gueros. I really enjoy the backroom when they have a lot of pictures like that. It makes it that much easier to get through. And very interesting stuff, obviously, that's really big engineering stuff and very impressive. Anyway, I'm going to turn over to the commissioners. Do you have any questions for city staff? Mr. Wallace, you do.
Yes, Ms. Gueros, just one quick question in regards to the timelines. Since this is also affecting Bloomington, are they currently looking at the approvals at the same time, or could that cause delays to this project or anything that we're aware of, at least at this point?
Yep. They're looking for this project to start this spring and then take approximately a year for the full completion, and I believe that they are pursuing the required permitting through the city of Bloomington on the same kind of process so that they can have everything complete and in hand and ready to go.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Ms. Gueros, you said that occasionally they, Centerpoint draws down Black Dog Lake. Do they plan to do that for this project? And I know you were explaining, you know, how they were going to manage some of the equipment, but I didn't hear. I guess I'm trying to visualize what they'll do for the Black Dog Lake area.
Sure. For the Black Dog Lake, part of that is going to be trenched, and that's in areas of the wetlands on either side, so they will be doing some trenching in there and then also some horizontal drilling. The difference between the lake and the river is that the pipeline pretty much lays on the bottom of the Black Dog Lake as opposed to being drilled thirty, thirty-one feet or whatever below that. And actually, it's Excel that draws that down for the electric generating plant, and in this case, I don't believe, we haven't, haven't had any plans. Usually Excel will let us know when they're going to be doing that, just so we can be kind of on, on guard or note in case we get comments from the public.
Chair, I have one more question, please.
Go ahead, Commissioner Timmerman.
And maybe this question is for the applicant, but if there's a catastrophic failure of the pipeline, what does that do to our drinking water corridor?
Is the applicant is online?
Yeah.
Would that be something that, that you could address?
I was told that we have Wayne Sikora, who is consultant with ERM, and TJ Hyder, what with Centerpoint Energy on Zoom. And we'll just be patient, and they'll join us here in a sec.
This is TJ Hyder. Are you able to hear me okay?
We are. Good evening. Thank you for joining us. Could you answer Mr., Commissioner Timmerman's question?
Yeah, that was in regards to underground gas release and its effect on the drinking water.
That's right.
So usually, a, a natural gas leak wouldn't have an effect on the drinking water since the gas is less dense than water and air. It would rise up through any kind of cracks or fissures and up into the atmosphere. So it's not like a petroleum line where it would mix into the table and be drawn in through the wells.
Okay, thank you.
And commissioners, there are plans. Part of the application that they have includes various practices to deal with those types of things. It's just that the regulating agencies are more like the Corps of Engineers and some of those agencies, so we don't have that level of detail required as far as our conditional use permit, but it is, it does have to be addressed by the applicant.
I think it's really nice to hear that simplistic layman's answer, though, and I mean, that's the main concern with any pipeline, so I think that's satisfactory. Thank you.
Yeah, especially when you're messing with the drinking water.
Right.
Right? Any other questions for the applicant or city staff? For me, I, I was just curious, you know, this is very interesting, especially drilling at thirty-one feet below the river. That's, that's an impressive feat, I think. One question I have for the applicant is, is this a replacement for, due to routine maintenance, or is there cracks, or what, what brought on this whole project?
Ah, yeah, no, that's an excellent question. So we have been working over the last ten years to upgrade all of the primary lines that serve our natural gas system between Fridley and Burnsville. So the whole interlude, Minneapolis, all those surrounding suburbs. We are getting towards the end of that replacement program, and we have been, obviously, a lot of planning going into these river crossings. We did the Lindale back in twenty fifteen, and now this is where this particular line fell. It is nineteen fifty's vintage, so it has been there for close to seventy years, and because of that era, we don't necessarily have all the traceability records that our current regulatory bodies require, so we're replacing this one. The current line, the Nicolet, is a twenty, so we are upsizing that to twenty-four, replacing same or similar corridor and just making sure that we have all the appropriate records for material regulations, locations, items like that.
Wow. I have to say, very interesting stuff. How do you drill horizontally underneath the river? How does that work?
It's not true horizontal. On a sheet of paper, we're going from A to B in a straight line, but the entry of the drill is about ten degrees downward pitch, and as the drill progresses from beginning to end, it actually has a slow bend, so there's a small deflection that it carries throughout the entire drill. We'll put the nine-inch pilot, starts on the drill side, goes through to the northern, in this case for the river, daylight. We then connect a, a head about twelve inches large that has teeth on the backside, and it's pulled backwards so that all the debris is pulled out where the drill rig is, where we'll contain and reclaim any of the slurry. And so there's a, a process of going back and just slightly enlarging the hole over multiple passes till it's about thirty inches, just slightly oversized for the twenty-four inch. The pipe would be for the river crossing laid on the, the slope in Bloomington and connected to the rods of the drill, and then it's pulled back through the hole with a drilling mud that acts like a lubricant.
And obviously, this is not something that happens all the time. Are you, is there some type of a crew that goes nationwide and does this type of thing, or how does that, where do you get the experience on that, just to even do it?
Large ones like this are a specialty crew, so the contractor for the project that we do most of the pipeline handling, excuse me, is Minnesota Limited. We've subcontracted Michael's Utility Services and their large bore crew to do the actual directional drilling for the lake and the river.
Wow, and there's got to be a lot of pressure on, so you, you drill it thirty inches wide, and then once the pipe goes in, I'm, I'm assuming the ground will fill in around it? Is that usually how it works?
Yeah, for that depth, a lot of the drilling mud will fill in the hole. You know, a twenty-four inside a thirty-inch, you're talking three inches of gap on top and bottom relative if the pipe stayed directly centered. It's more likely to sit a little bit low in the bore hole, especially at the bottom, and then a lot of the excess drilling mud will stay down and fill in the voids.
So no fears of erosion or anything crazy like that?
Not at that depth. There's also varying levels of bedrock through the area. I think the, um, apologize, towards the southern side of Black Dog Lake, there's actually twelve feet, thirteen feet of bedrock, which involves drilling through the bedrock a little bit with a, a more aggressive bed, smaller holes so they don't get plugged up, and taking smaller steps up in diameter at a time, so it's a longer process just to make sure it's a maintained and safe job.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions commissioners before I open up a public hearing here? This is a public hearing, so at six fifty-seven, I'm This is a public hearing, so at 6:57, I'm opening a public hearing. Anyone online Zoom or here in the audience, welcome to come speak on this issue or have any questions to Center Point Energy. Again, if you were called in, you can hit star six, speak with the moderator, let them know that, that you would like to speak to this issue, and if you're on Zoom, you can chat, use the chat feature to speak with the moderator. And it sounds like no one is waiting on Zoom or no one's on the phone, and our one audience member is just sitting quietly and patiently, so that's fine. And so I will close the public hearing here at 6:58, and I will move it to our Commissioners for any other motions, conversations. Commissioner Watt?
You know, I'll just chime in and make a comment. I agree with you. What a fascinating engineering project. It was great to see all the drawings and wow, that's pretty cool. So that's all I had to say.
I'll entertain the motion.
Commissioner Wallace, you going to make the motion?
That we recommend to the city council approval of the CUP amendment to allow Center Point Energy to replace sections of the 24-inch natural gas line Lindale and Nicollet pipelines within the floodplain, shoreland, and wetlands environmental overlays district, subject to the six conditions.
Great. A motion has been made by Commissioner Wallace. Commissioner Watt?
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Watt. All in favor? Any discussion before we move into the vote?
I just want to say that it's exciting to see that, that steep increase in my January bill being applied to something to replace, you know, a 70-year-old pipeline, so makes it hurt a little less.
Yeah, it's, it's an important thing, I think. I agree. With that, I will call for a vote. All in favor of the motion on the table, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? Hearing none, it will move to a consent agenda for the city council meeting on Tuesday, February the 22nd at 5:30 PM here at these various chambers. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, Center Point Energy. Really appreciate it. That was very helpful, and yeah, it was fun to nerd out a little bit on that one. Took a little bit more time. With that, I will move to the next item on our agenda. It looks like updates. Any updates, Commissioners? I am going to throw one out there. I did meet with city council last Tuesday, the February 8th. We presented our work plan to city council. City council wanted to let me tell you how great of a job you guys are doing. I really appreciate the work we've been doing. They do understand that every once in a while, we do have to throw things their way, so we'll give them a nay vote here and there, and they did have one of those discussions that, I believe Commissioner Timmerman, you gave a nay vote on, and they did discuss our, our argument against the planning or the, what am I thinking? The fees, the dedication fees, and decided to keep going with what, what they had going. And with that, that is my update to all of you, so good work and thanks for making us all look good. That's good news. Any updates, staff?
The only thing that we have is we are still, we're, we are really still working on the zoning ordinance update. The, we're working on the industrial and commercial plans and hope to bring that to kind of in draft form, either at the next meeting or the one after that. What we're doing is trying to format and include information, trying to make it easier for someone from the public, you know, to understand and find things. So that is a little cumbersome, but I think that you'll like it, and I think that it will really be helpful for the public. So that is something that we're working on. And as far as the entire city code update, we just found out that through changes in, in staff, our city clerk, Michelle Collins, and Erica Henderson, who some of the Commissioners may recall, she's now part of our city clerk's department, they'll be kind of heading that, that process from now on out, so.
Wow.
Yes.
They're traded from Hastings.
Yes, she did.
Over to Barnesville. That's great. Congratulations, Erica.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. She was one of our former planning chairs, just two years ago, so.
And we will make sure she's in the hot seat if she ever shows up.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Will invite Bud and.
Oh, it'll be fun. It'll be a good time. She'll have so much fun. I'm sure she's watching this tonight, too.
I'm sure.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Live.
Live, or, you know, we, we do play reruns because, big demand. At any rate, with that said, last thing I have on the agenda is our adjournment. Commissioners, Commissioner Bradock?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Commissioner Bradock, any second. Commissioner Wallace?
I will second.
With that, all in favor of journeying, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It sounds like that's adjournment. Thank you, everyone, for joining us, and have a great night and happy Valentine's Day.